We're going to open up with a quick prayer.
Lord, we're thankful for the day you've given us. We're thankful for the opportunity that you have here today, Lord, to serve the public, make decisions that benefit the public. We thankful, Lord, for your goodness and your mercy. And we ask you this morning, Lord, touch your hearts and minds and help us to do our very best today. We ask that everything we do will be good in your side. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
All right, we call the meeting order. It's Tuesday, May the 20th, 2025. It's nine oh one AM. We do have a quorum here. I'd like to acknowledge a guest. Do we have anybody for public? Want to talk to us? Okay, all right, we'll close the public here. We'll go and deliberate and consider action on the following items. Selection of requests for proposals for RFP 2025 dash 2026 oh one for insurance coverage, Newton County. We sent out the proposals. We do have TAC has sent back a proposal for auto and liability and law enforcement. And Levitt Group, Mr. John LaBoire, has proposed for the property insurance, Panigan County. And that's same insurance we've had for the past couple of years. This year it has went down. Or our insurance proposal for the county for a year is three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Last year it was four hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven. And our auto insurance. I don't see the rates on it, but it was eighty-eight thousand some odd dollars last year. And it's a hundred and ten thousand this year. A difference of twenty-two thousand, one dollar. Increase of auto liability. That's where we at on the insurance.
That twenty-two thousand increase, is that due to increased claims or is that just a natural increase in insurance coverage?
No.
Increased claim. We shouldn't have any increased claims. No, and I'm not sure what else filed.
The insurance?
Yes.
Please, overall, it's increasing. I mean, everybody's insurance, all of y'all. And we have a lot of buildings that's insured as well, a nonprofit building. And it increased by seventy-five percent.
What building did that? Oh.
Seventy-five percent.
Not, not a Kennedy building.
I'm just telling you, when we went to school, they told us that insurance about my kid's son, you know, and this was about last year, this year, just because of the disasters and everything that are happening everywhere, not in our whole area.
So one of the things that, and I didn't get to study this as much as I'd like to, but one of the things that I didn't see in the property insurance packet was a list of net disposition. When you look at TAC, they show you how much money they have in their, in their pockets to cover claims. But when you look at the property insurance, you don't, if it's there, I overlooked it. But I didn't see where a net disposition of this, this insurance company is covering us, this is how much money they have in the bank, so we can, what I did see in that was that they're not, they're not covered, I don't want to use the word license, but they're not assured by Texas to insure in Texas. So they're exempt under some laws or something. They're out of Louisiana. Just, you know, no net disposition and then, oh, and by the way, we don't meet, I couldn't find it in here, I got it highlighted, but we don't meet something in the state of Texas to sell insurance. Maybe the representative here today can talk a little bit about that. Just raised some concerns to me this morning that I was going through.
I know the insurance companies, they have the quotes on as travelers, Liberty Mutual, and it's another one right there.
Well, we got Hanover on our scheduled equipment. We have Liberty Mutual on our order team before I put it in the break. And what the gentleman speaks about is all our property coverage, we are with what's called approved not admitted carriers in the state of Texas. So the forms that they're using are not approved filings by the Texas Insurance Commission, okay? As far as their liquidity and ability to pay claims, we have shown their A and S rating, their movie rating, which are all A superior with a surplus of not less than seven, which is seven hundred and fifty billion dollars surplus. There is a lot of paper in the state of Texas that's written on non-admitted forms.
Yeah, what this says specifically is this insurance contract is with an insurer not licensed to transact insurance in the state, is issued and delivered as surplus line coverage under Texas Insurance Statutes.
So Texas, yes, sir, surplus lines.
So the Texas Department of Insurance does not audit finances or review the surplus lines insurer, right, this coverage, insurer is not a member of the Property and Casualty Insurance Guarantee Association, created in this chapter. That is correct. So, you know, that, that's a flag to me, and especially when I don't see any documentation, you mentioned seven hundred and fifty million dollars. But that's not included in the packet or did I overlook?
That's true. That wasn't in there, but their A and S rating is on.
The building on Davis and Street is it all, they click?
Yeah, I see. So there's, there's a list of all the buildings.
That list is hard to see.
Oh.
And I treat you guys, I promise. So that what's called a shared program. This county has a twenty-six million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar portfolio. And there are six percent carriers that are participating in that limit. It's called a shared, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, it's thirteen. Cross cover applications, schedule of values. Deuteronomical page. That is their surplus by A and S.
I did not see a moment of A on this page. It's there. Cross cover application and schedule of values that run manup. So I don't see a net disposition.
I will, I'll get you, I know exactly what you would like to say, and I'll admit that for me.
You know, basically, if you look at TAC's proposal, look at how much we're insuring there, and you look at, look at it, and said, God forbid something catastrophic happened in the state of Texas. Tax got all of this surplus of money out there, but you know, you feel comfortable that, you know, Newton, Jasper, Orange Counties all got wiped out at one time for some natural disaster or something. They've got more than enough funds to insure and cover that insured amount. But I don't see that here in that clause about Texas. Although I don't doubt the representative's confidence in it, it not, not being an expert in the matter, it raises concerns. And then also, Judge, you, you know, I'd sent you a note that I reached out to our state representative, Ms. Schopner. Her director over the district contacted me la, even last night late and said that she would be on the phone with TAC this morning, trying to get them to extend an offer to Newton County. Now, I know that you all have reached out to them multiple times, but State Representative Schopner's office is going to greatly encourage them to do that. Now, they may not, they may not carry any weight, but you know, this doesn't expire until July, correct? And we have, this offer is good for thirty days, right?
Oh, it is, sir.
Yes.
I'll also say, you appreciate, as the association elements is a tool. And they are a tool. They have a linked amount of funds. In the scenario of three county wipeout, and they paid their claims, all right?
Yeah, it looks like by their net disposition, they can surely, surely cover those that are insured. I mean, I just, what I, the way I feel this morning, I'm not making a motion, but the way I feel this morning is that until we get that net disposition of, yeah, they got more than enough money to insure us and, you know, I would like to maybe just postpone this.
Well, we got court next week on the twenty-seventh. So if you want to table this until the court session on the twenty-seventh, and then bring it back up.
I, I really would like to do that. Then we can, the gentleman can get Ms. Courtney that information. She can get us, get it to all of us. We can feel better about it. If TAC comes back with, I mean, because we're talking about spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if there's anything that we can do to get a second proposal, you know, procurement policy has us getting more than one quote for less than ten thousand as a commissioner. So surely we can get a second. And they may not. They may come back and say, no, we're not insuring you.
Well, we, we've had this interns for two years. So this is some questions we should have come up with before.
Let me ask you guys, would we have to start a new bid process in case they would want to make us an offer so that it's no longer eligible as a brand? Yeah, this was fair. So should we go ahead and do that and hope, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying? Should I go ahead and act like we're going to do bids again in case? Or would you rather wait till the twenty-seventh?
So I think that's a question that the judge's office, like yourself and the judge, can take up with the attorneys. Because I did copy the attorney last night, because I didn't want to be out of, out of compliance and just asking, hey, is there some way you could get us another offer? You know, I didn't contact TAC directly. But if, if they say, yeah, we will put in an offer, then maybe that's something that Judge Cochran and Misty can say, yeah, we're going to go back out for bids or.
In the, in the timeframe that we have, maybe should get prepared and expect, act like we're expecting one and then cancel it. Can we do that? I don't want to.
She was trying to get us feedback this morning before nine. So I expect that judge's office should hear something today.
Well, legally, you know, we've already discussed what they're proposing. So if we go out again, that's going to put.
Well, I, I do it at risk. Well, I do agree with that, but I know we went out for bid three times on the county road in precinct four because we rejected the bid, you know, it was and, and the bid's not outlandish. I mean, it's, you know, it's ninety thousand dollars less than, ninety some odd thousand less than last year. And for twenty-six million dollars coverage, it's not bad. But I still think it's worth the question, just.
Yeah, I agree. And, Mr. John, you know, there is, there's the decrease in what we paid last year. And can you explain?
Something in surplus lines market. Something in surplus lines. Like I was talking about, you know, auto liability going up, Texas is becoming a litigious state. Okay? The number of suits, all in auto liability, property injury, driving, that's perceived in Louisiana's tires. But we're seeing that in Texas.
Well, I was hoping you was going to say, no claims.
And also, also, yeah, no.
I think the judge was talking about, you have a reason for the decrease in property coverage, not so much increase in life home auto.
Yes, just as solidly in the market, there have been no claims since we have been on the insurance with the county since twenty twenty-three. The property claims are being made in our property, in the marine, it's our equipment, and our equipment.
I think that was discussed when we first took insurance with these odds, as you said, as the years went on, when their claims are insured, theories.
Newton County is considered tier one exposure. You understand what a tier one county is? Even though we're not on the water, tier one town. There was about a two million dollar aura claim. There came back with that frequency breach. There were the three hundred thousand dollar claim breaches that even had, and that dropped property. They may not, they may not come back and offer tier one property.
And that's, you know, with tier one, basically, that's, we're considered a coastal county, so, you know, and that was one of the reasons TAC said, hey, you know, we're not entering.
They each are bouncing.
Sure. You know, when they started dropping, they, they dropped a bunch of them. You know, I know you was, you was talking about it on the list, so.
Well, I think the message that State Representative is going to give them is that, you know, we're a supporter of their organization. Every county in the state of Texas is, therefore, they should be a little bit more supportive of the counties. So, you know, we should have dropped us because we're tier one and asked us to participate in supporting TAC as a whole. So, but you know something I don't see in all this insurance coverage? And I've talked to the auditor about this more than once. I'm saying you're wrong, but I don't see any coverage for our equipment. I mean, you know, when we leave a piece of equipment, like yesterday, I'll give you an example. I left a piece of equipment on a county property, a buyout property. So we wouldn't have to drive it all the way back to the county morgue. I don't see where it's covered.
All the equipment, they're coming here with these equipment. Porty sends the equipment.
Where is it in this packet?
In the read.
Where is it at in this packet? There's no list. And again, I got this yesterday afternoon. I haven't studied it. But I've looked through it. I don't see a list of equipment in here. I see a list of buildings. Is that in this packet?
If it was not, that gives.
I know I seen it somewhere, but because I want to look through it, make sure that the new equipment we had is in it.
I see it has the page scheduled equipment, and I don't see the schedule for handle, so.
I did not see it in here. And, and it says, this number one here, you know. Yeah, I see my skit's there, but I don't see my, don't see my. Yeah, this is something I need to go through and make sure all the equipment is on here. I don't know. I didn't see it in. Yeah, everybody does.
That's Cochran's office has that list. That was a year ago.
Well, it's, it wasn't in this packet.
Yes.
It says equipment breakdowns, but there's nothing.
No, 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 no. Keep going.
Alrighty. It's wrong, it's wrong. That's for that sort of film.
Oh, but it wasn't.
That is wrong. Okay. So everyone needs a copy of this.
Make sure all the equipment that, that each commissioner has is listed on that.
And is there any way we could get the font? I'm serious. I can't read that mess. I gotta get some.
I can cut out the unnecessary information and just make it equipment, bin number, or something like that.
I got a magazine plan.
That's in my desk, I swear. I actually took a picture of my phone and blew it up. That's what I do every time.
There's one comment I would like to make on the schedule the gentleman speaks about. If you look at it. Um, the total insured value. Read that number out loud, please. Or maybe if you have to let, twenty-three, if you really look at page thirty-seven. Thirty-seven. At the very top, schedule contractors, equipment, you see that whole million and two thirty-one, three two four.
Yep.
That's an eighty thousand dollar difference. Know where that's coming from? Look at that very last page. This category there, the other category did not pick up that very last addition. So there is another eighty thousand of insured value on this quote. And I have taken the value of the equipment times the rate. And that will be an additional four hundred and forty-one dollars, four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Well, I'm, I'm going to just ask, I'm going to move that we tabled the property insurance into the next meeting. And in between that time, that each commissioner gets a list of the equipment to look through and make sure it's in there and that the packet is updated to reflect changes of gentleman's expedition.
And while we're on the subject, if I could ask y'all maybe to start, if you sell a piece of equipment to prompt me, just like you do if you buy one, hey, add this to the insurance. Maybe you guys can start prompting, maybe remove this just to be sure.
And I'm assuming that new asset tracking system you guys are putting in will cover that, right?
So yeah, I will.
Right. Yeah.
If you start a new bill, please, in the new half, while we mention here, you have to offer like certain insurance.
Of builder's risk.
Yes.
We have a half million dollars under this policy for newly acquired or constructed. But also the contractor should have their all builder's risk.
Okay. We'll get that some.
Oh. That will make sure of that.
Yeah, and then the engineering group will sure, that's part of the bid package, bonded and insured.
Construction two fifty.
So, pressure, file, lay the motion, we table this to the next commission's court. By Commissioner Hobson, all in favor? All against. All right.
Cochran, may I also ask, while we're here, in addition to the renewal lines of the property and business vertical property, the equipment breakdowns and scheduled equipment, we are proposing for your consideration, it's your crime coverage, and also the plot.
Yes. You put crime in there.
But there's crime line out of the fifteen hundred ninety-six dollars. Does that have any interest?
So as far as crime, you're talking about somebody going and vandalizing people's equipment or?
Crime is. There is a number of parallels that we are proposing under your crime here. We have employee theft, which is employee theft, it's any act of stealing. Money, security, other properties where they're acting alone or on collusion with others. We are proposing forgery or alteration. That is the forgery or alteration of financial document to be, that's the one, called accounting. We're proposing money and securities on premises. That is, when literally a parallel theft is covered under our property policy, but there's got to be a visible sign of forced entry. Okay? That's theft. On premises theft is somebody that walks in and says they're fine. Okay? So that's robbery. Loss of money or securities by disappearance, damage, or destruction. We have money in transit. Money and securities caused by theft is scared from destruction while in transit outside the premises. Running care of, custody, control of a messenger. We have money order and counterfeit money. That's financial loss caused by. That's financial loss caused by you. If you're good faith acceptance of a money order, that's not paid upon presentation. Obviously counterfeit money, the erroneous acceptance of counterfeit money, definite exchange for services provided for other legal obligations. And then the last tab that we added to our proposal, we proposed flood. And we had the locations, we took the highest insured locations. We gave the maximum amount flood policy will pay, which is half million per building, half million per contents. If that particular building was less valued, would meet those limits. We have the duck hole, we have the premium.
Okay. Now, as far as on the, say if someone was making an offsite deposit and
Yep.
uh, God forbid they're getting erect money disappears or they get robbed.
Yep.
So that insurance would cover.
The entrance, depth disappearance or destruction. Matter of fact, if you take it home in the money bag and you're gonna do it first thing in the morning, we'll cover you while that money is at your premises.
Although we don't do that. I just speak from my office. We don't keep money overnight.
Yeah.
And if it's brought into the commissioner's office, I think the law actually says, well, there isn't. So there is a, there is a clause in the government code. We can accept, we can accept cashier's checks for rental of the senior center in Deweyville. We have to get that cashier's check to the treasurer's office that same day.
Well, you know, I wasn't thinking about the commissioner's office. I was thinking about some of the other offices that collect, you know, and, you know, like Clark's office, you know, they collect fees. They have to get it to the treasurer's office or make deposits at the bank. So that, and that's, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah.
Other than the tax issue, what about the peril of employee theft? Extremely broad, any act of stealing. Not in line, that's not in line, any.
How much is that coverage adding to the overall cost of the premium?
Sixteen hundred ninety six.
Okay, the sixteen ninety six. Well, we worked it if we needed. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not much, it's not much money to have. Spending three hundred fifty three thousand, you had another sixteen hundred for that type of coverage. It seems silly not to do it, don't you? I mean, to me, it just, it's not, it, like I said, it's not absurd. You know, I had a business a couple of years back. I paid eighteen thousand dollars a year for insurance. It was nowhere near twenty six million in value, so it just, it's not absurd. It's just, there's some details we need to have. Make us feel, make me feel better about it.
All right, anymore?
As, as far as flood, if you have time, please look at the flood quote.
That's, that's, that's another question I have. Uh, flood, you say we had a broken pipe in a building that cuts. So that's, that's, does it cover wind driven rain, water?
Yes. I do waterfall by wind, storm, rain, tidal wave, et cetera. But a burst fire is not a flood.
Not a flood, but it would be covered under property, so it would probably still cover.
We're not gonna.
Okay. So how much, we talked about the sixteen ninety six for flood, it did not have a price for flood. Again.
It's a very vast, that should be in your, and there's premiums. But it's different, uh, per impression. The sixteen ninety six is crime, and they're the options on the flood.
So, so this is something, Judge, you could probably set out a pencil to. I mean, the only thing that I know of, you guys know it better than me, but precinct four, I mean, it's certainly not subject to flood unless dam breaks. Yes. But all these other buildings, I mean, can't imagine this building ever flooding.
And, and, you know, the only building that may be at risk would be the Dewell Sub courthouse. And it's high enough, you know, it's out of the hundred year flood drain, flood bank.
There's a lot of flooding permission on the Newton County website, and I have trouble finding that you can flood some of the valley. That's your question, ma'am. I'm just curious, but I'll keep it. And, you know, you just tried it. If you think there's a tsunami or something, uh, the gentleman was talking about the sub courthouse in Orange. I was thinking that location also. What's gonna happen if we have a nineteen minute, two day hurricane, right?
Yeah, it won't reach it.
It won't?
Okay. So this, uh, but on here, like the Powell Hotel is, it's a forty, six hundred sixty nine dollar a year premium for flood coverage. I can't imagine us paying that.
The only thing I see, uh, you know, you got the maybe I have to look in Old Salem, but you know, it's, it's really, you got the Heartburn Community Center, Dewell Community Center and the, uh, Dewell Sub courthouse and the maintenance phone.
And the Heartburn Community Center is a center block building with a tile floor that we're talking about leasing to the Florida Department. That's a dollar a year. And imagine us.
Yeah. And then it would be South County for the, uh, flood, flood pump.
Bills. And the county, but honestly, I mean, it, it's not gonna hurt anything in the county morgue. It's concrete floors and tin walls inside of, we would cut a sheet, I wouldn't spend money for that. I mean, I can imagine, if it got good, we would fix it ourselves.
If it flooded the sub courthouse and county morgue, it would be in a world to hurt everybody else.
Me. Yeah, there'd be a lot of water. In retrospect, in sixteen, that water was a long way of buildings by distance, much less high.
Yeah, you have the federal probation increase all the way over to the east side of eighty six or west side of. I will say, uh, the, uh, theft insurance, that's something we are interested in. Uh, flood insurance, I think we're, we're not interested in the flood.
I see.
So.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, budget amendments, our item number two. You have none? All right, payment of bill. We have no bills, break. What? I'm just messing. All right, I need a motion from the left side.
Make the motion with Jared, this court section.
All right, motion made by Richard White. Thinking about the Mr. Benson, all in favor?
That's right.
All against. All right.